Call this meeting of the Salem Housing Authority for June 11, 2012 to order. The city recorder will call the roll.
Counselor, I'm sorry, Commissioner Teszler?
Present.
Commissioner Nanki?
Here.
Commissioner Claussen?
Here.
Commissioner Dickey?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Blasey?
Here.
Commissioner Clem? Absent. Chair Bennett?
Here. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have no one signed up for public comment as anyone that want to address the Housing Authority. Okay. We have one public hearing scheduled this evening. And again, I have no one signed up. Could you, city recorder, read the...
Yes, I can. And I checked the microphones earlier. They were working. I don't know why they're low. They appear low tonight, again?
We can hear you.
Okay. The Salem Housing Authority will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony regarding an exemption from the competitive bidding process and authorization of an alternative contracting method for a public improvement contract for the renovation of Parkway Village
Thank you. And we have a staff report. Mr. Wilch, are you our staff reporter?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Pleased to be here. Andy Wilch, Housing Administrator, Salem Housing Authority. Tonight, before you, I'm here to discuss Resolution Number 2121, Public Hearing Exemption from Competitive Bid Process and Authorization of an Alternative Contracting Method for a Public Improvement Contract for the Renovation of the Parkway Village Apartments. Parkway Village was constructed in 1997. It's 124 two- and three-bedroom units on 7.2 acres in North Salem, I should say, north of the Salem Parkway. Substantial renovation is needed and has a pending state application for refinance with low-income housing tax credits. Project schedule. The project is planned in phases with a 78-unit first phase known as Parkway West. Renovated Parkway West units must be leased to qualified tenants by December 31, 2013, to meet financing conditions. Staff is recommending an alternative contracting approach to expedite project delivery. Specifically, that alternative delivery system is a construction manager general contractor approach. It's an alternative approach to project delivery that results in a contract with a CMGC competitively selected on the base of experience and capacity. The CMGC process still does provide for a competitive RFP. What is different in the CMGC is that the traditional low-bid process is what the local contract review board will discuss exempting from a low bid, and it becomes a qualification-based solicitation. The CMGC adds early value to the project team in design development, constructability reviews, provides value engineering scheduling, estimating, and coordinating of the overall business, I'm sorry, overall building process. Unlike a traditional design, bid, build, which is a more linear sequential process, this is an integrated process with team members there at the beginning. Under the S.H.A. Public Contracting Rules, PCR, as adopted by the Commission, the exemption authorization process has two steps. One is, the Housing Authority Commission must approve an exemption from traditional lowest bidder competitive bid process. And number two, the Commission must authorize the use of a construction manager general contractor procurement method. In the competitive bid process, the S.H.A.'s public contracting rules provide for the exemption of a public improvement contract from competitive bidding requirements if the exemption is unlikely to encourage favoritism and will result in substantial cost savings. In granting exemptions, the Commission as the local contract review board shall adopt written findings that support the exemption. When appropriate, direct the use of alternative contracting methods, in this case, the CMGC. Authorization of a CMGC, excuse me, I have that backwards there, CMGC contract may be authorized if one or more of the following types of benefits are demonstrated: time savings, cost savings, technical complexities. Facts and findings: exemption from competitive bidding, exemption is unlikely to encourage favoritism awarding a public improvement contract, or substantially diminished competition for the public improvement. The CMGC process will be selected through a qualification-based request for proposals. Under PCR 9.9, any person or firm may submit a response to the RFP, and considerable interest in the project is expected from general contractors in both Oregon and Washington. Secondly, exemption will result in substantial cost savings. The proposed CMGC construction process will result in cost savings associated with the opportunity for early integration of value engineering, creative solutions, working to the most seamless impact on the 78 clients that live that will be impacted by this Phase 1. Some will be relocated off-site, others rotated within the project. The project will have a comprehensive approach to dealing with the human element, the design, and the contractor process. Authorization to utilize a CMGC contract. Time savings: CMGC process completes renovation work on the project by December 31, 2013. Traditional design bid, build process does not. The importance of the December 31, 2013 deadline is, the project right now, and up until that point, is eligible to receive additional tax credit equity. As you know, we applied to the state for tax credits, low-income housing tax credits. Right now, after December 31, 2013, when a particular federal legislation bill sunsets, the project would be subject to an approximate loss of $1 million in tax credit equity. Technical complexity: comprehensive demolition, technical complexity of the project. Comprehensive demolition, renovation, site regrading must be accomplished with tenants in the place. This is an active income-producing property that will have people living in the multifamily units as we're shuffling around clients. It's a particularly complex puzzle. We think we have that set. Getting it set early is something that will clearly help us to manage the client expectations, or resident expectations, I should say, and ensure that they are impacted to the least degree possible. Cost savings: the general contractor will be early in the process. Will identify the most cost-efficient materials, construction techniques. For this project, there will be a competitive bid process, and it will save money. But the real value at this point, until we get to a guaranteed maximum price, the real value is the integrated team approach where the design, and the contractor, and the architect, and all the factors of production can come together and find the best way to do this work on behalf of the project, the client, and the handful of investors, public and private, the state, a tax credit equity investor, a lender. They will all be there looking for predictability and cost control. And the best way to do, provide predictability and cost control, is through an alternative On the... Appropriate notification of this public hearing was published in the Daily Journal of Commerce. At the time notice was given, copies of the draft findings were made available to the And finally, my conclusion: Staff recommends that the Housing Authority Commission acting as a local contract review board adopt Resolution 2121, exempting from competitive bidding and authorizing the use of the CMGC process for all phases of the renovation of Parkway Village Apartments.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Wilch. Are there any questions? Counselor Blasey?
Thank you for that explanation. The question I have, the staff recommendation, as it's worded, it says you're requesting an exemption from the competitive bidding process. But from what you just described, my understanding is that you're actually going to issue, and correct me if I'm wrong, you're going to issue either an request for proposal, or request for bids, or request for qualifications that would include both qualifications and bid price? Would that be correct?
No, there would not be bid price involved. What the exemption does is it exempts from the traditional low-bid threshold, and it looks at qualifications and experience as the basis. The contract price for the general contractor as a CMGC would be defined as the design is finished, the costs are spected out, the scope of work is spected out, and finalized into design drawings, and then there would be a guaranteed maximum price.
Okay.
The benefit of this is that we take care of more uncertainty earlier in the project, and therefore, we have less uncertainty at the end where there could be a series of change orders or other cost-related variables.
Okay. Have you established, though, you know, what you expect the not-to-exceed amount to be?
We absolutely have a well-defined, tested, hard-cost construction contingency escalator, inflation contingency, and then a hard-cost contingency of 10%.
Okay. Okay. So, I'll try to put this in a form of a question, and not more of me talking about CMGC. I guess the risk I see right now is that by requesting just the qualifications, and I certainly understand that for this type of project, but then you're not actually setting, and I know this is part of CMGC, but I've seen it done both ways, and so the question is, I've seen it done both ways where you can either set the not-to-exceed amount more early on, or, as you're describing, you set it later after it's, you know, the project has been designed. So, the question I have is, given that this is somewhat, I would imagine, somewhat straightforward, it's renovation of apartments, I realize there's some uncertainty, but yet, why you would wait to set that not-to-exceed amount or the maximum price?
Good question. So, because the general contractor's not providing a bid, he or they are not, also not lining up their subcontractors and other contractors, and so, they don't have any information from the ground up on their subs.
Right.
So, there's about 50% of construction, or 50% of design, when you get in that point, you're getting really close to knowing. So, it's not going to be at the very end. There's going to be stages, 50% and 70% are the targets that we have right now for knowing a lot more. Provisions would be there for negotiating a guaranteed maximum price, and if there's some extraordinary demands that aren't not borne out by our sources of funds and what we think is a reasonable cost, then we can choose not to negotiate and walk away.
Okay. One last question. And this is just for clarification. So, in your request for qualifications, is that, that's what you'll be using?
Yes. It's a RFP.
An RFP. Okay. So, proposals that would include qualifications but not cost. Will it state in there what you expect the not-to-exceed amount to be? I know you're not setting the guaranteed maximum price at this point. I understand the process, but is there a...
You know, we hadn't anticipated that we would put any target price, if you will, in there.
Okay.
We think it'd be a little bit truer if it comes through the process with the general.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, a question I have is, I've done some CMGC work in the past, and for the work from where the contractors submit their RFP, and then get through the design process to the point where we have documents sufficient to come up with a GMP, generally, they ask for a fee for that portion of the work. Is that fee not being accounted for in the scoring of the RFP?
We're asking in the RFP, and this is back to your question, too, to some degree, we are asking for their pricing associated with pre-construction activities that we have spelled out, because there is pre-construction. So, the general, the successful respondent will do pre-construction and be paid for that on a schedule that they set in their response. It is true that we're looking, we do ask for percent of overhead, percent of profit, and those variables to understand whether or not their expectations of how aggressively this contract will pay them, that they'll, will have some benchmark to understand if they're way out over their skis, or if they're in a reasonable area.
Okay. And then a follow-up on that. We talked about this right before, but I think it'd be worth talking about it on the record, was, obviously, this project is contingent on the low-income housing tax credits, and obviously, if we don't receive the credits, which are still pending, this project will go nowhere, correct? Or the award of the RFP would go nowhere until the project is awarded.
That's correct. We're on a tight enough timeline that we're trying to put our pieces in place. We are working with an architect that has been in the project. We're looking to get a contract ready to go, not executing it. We're looking to do that with a project manager on behalf of the agency. That solicitation's on the street now, a competitive RFP. And then the CMGC, we would solicit, but we would wait until we heard, which we think will be the first week of July, on whether or not we've been awarded funds through the tax credit. And the tax credit is the lion's share. It's almost $8 million of the total project cost.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions?
I have one more.
Blasey?
I'm sorry. And I know you all discussed this before, and I wasn't part of the discussion, so I...
You'll need to pull your mic up.
Sorry. So, the last question I have, I promise, is with regards to CMGC, once the project gets going and you're actually in the build phase, I know there's certainly a fundamental difference between how a contractor is paid under that type of contract versus just a fixed rate. And so, the question I have is, how is the city prepared to manage that contract and to oversee the costs and, you know, the applications for payment that come in from the contractor to ensure that the city's not overpaying based on, you know, an hourly rate that's been set for key staff, and all of the things that go into costing out the CMGC? The question is, how will you oversee that?
That's a great question. We have mechanisms in place in this solicitation to make sure that we know who's being proposed from company X to be the lead project manager, for instance, and what his or her rate is, and so, we can quantify it that way at the front end and hold that as a marker, and hold them to that. The subcontractors in all construction-related work is subject to Davis Bacon and prevailing wage. So, we work with Davis Bacon every day and know how to do that. And so, there's, you know, complete predictability in that. The wage rates are set, they're attached to the contract, and we know that the trades will earn X per hour for different trades. The recognition that we have, the executive director, John Wales, myself, and others, is that S.H.A., when I came on, had 60 staff, and we've got 42 now. So, we don't have the capacity to do this. Haven't professed to have the capacity to manage soup to nuts, you know, the clerk that works on this. So, that solicitation I mentioned is for an owner's rep and a project manager, and that individual would be on contract representing our interests, managing a myriad of variables, one of them being, you know, verification of cost and substantiating that and documenting that in an audible, in an audited way.
That is an excellent response.
Thank you.
All right. Any further questions? Counselor Nanki, I need a motion on this. Do I close the public hearing? Is there anyone from the public that wants to comment on this that didn't sign up? Okay. Public hearings closed. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move a staff recommendation to adopt Resolution 2121, exempting from competitive bidding and authorizing the use of the CMGC process for all phases of the renovation of Parkway Village Apartments, including and based on the findings contained therein.
Second by Dickey. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. Okay. Commissioner Nanki, the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move the consent calendar as presented.
Second.
Second by Teszler. We have an information report. Andy, do you have anything you want to highlight on this? Your information report?
On the PMR?
Yeah.
No, sir. I do have a couple of items that I mentioned to you, if that's possible.
Okay. Go. Go ahead.
Do you have some items you'd like to speak to?
I do.
Would you move the microphone up, please?
I'm sorry, I will. I will. I just wanted to follow up on a few items that various commissioners have asked for some report back on. Advertisement of the 10 units of S.H.A. affordable housing that the Commission authorized for sale. I'm about two weeks behind on that. I'll own that. But that's going to be out on the Friday of this week. We had quite a few delays associated with some of the, my second, or actually, my third comment there about the HUD Civil Rights Review that came in for reviewing Salem Housing Authority as well as the city. And though, as we know, reviewers won't necessarily give away everything that they found, or whatever concerns they may have, but overall, I felt that optimistic based upon the excerpt interview that S.H.A.'s in pretty good shape, and we'll find out when we get the final report. But that was a great deal of work by staff, and we think it went well. Finally, on a business side, S.H.A.'s looking, we have a fairly elaborate housing management information system that is a product of an organization called HABS, H-A-B-S. We've been working for some time with HABS to try and do direct deposit for our subsidy checks on behalf of our Section 8 clients. So, we now have direct deposit for S.H.A. to direct deposit checks into landlords' accounts. Landlords have been asking us for this for some time. We think it's going to be a fairly substantial cost savings. We estimate right now, even if we were at, you know, 50 to 60% of all landlords requesting direct deposit, we think we'd have a cost savings of about $20,000 per annum. That's postage, and that's staff time, and that's paper, and that's a lot of supplies. And so, we're looking for ways that we can do what we need to do a little bit differently and better, and less costly. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Counselor Teszler?
Thank you. I did have one comment. I really like the increase in the Veterans Assistance Supportive Housing Programs, FASH. I think that's a real need in our community, especially based on a recent survey of homeless individuals, and probably 75% of them are veterans, which I found to be kind of a shocking statistic. I also like this partnership with SK CDC, you know, another way to leverage a fantastic amount of money with a quasi-private corporation, so... And as far as the housing disposition, the last week has been an interesting series of articles in the Oregonian about various housing, you know, authorities in Portland and the surrounding areas selling their houses, and especially in the communities of Westland and Lake Oswego and those communities, and talking about how these people were basically forced, for lack of a better word, to move out of these communities and into less desirable areas. And, you know, I'm pleased to say that I don't think that's happening with this. And I was very pleased to see the way that the dispositions were done. People were offered a chance to buy their own homes. Some people were able to take advantage of that, which is always pretty nice to be able to offer somebody a chance to buy their own home. And I think we really stayed away from that happening, so... And I know that that's hard to do, and so, kudos to you and your staff for not letting that happen in this area and community, because that's not a desirable statistic. It really is not. So, I do appreciate the extra time and care that you put into that, and also putting up with my incessant bothering of you on the subject.
Any further comments or questions? If not, the motion is to approve the consent calendar. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. There's no further business to come for the Housing Authority. Without objection, I declare the meeting adjourned.
Oh, sure. Just declare the power.
Come to next meeting.
I'd like to hear some more declarations.
I got a couple more.
We'll get ourselves reassembled here, get going.
Yeah. It's like, I'll say that, right? It's like, now we need to be ready. I mean, you look at replacing counselors, and it's like, a year and nine months, and then...
All right. We'll call to order this meeting of the Urban Renewal Agency of the City of Salem for June 11, 2012. Could we please have the recorder call the roll?
Board Member Bennett?
Here.
Board Member Teszler?
Present.
Board Member Nanki?
Here.
Board Member Claussen?
Here.
Board Member Dickey?
Here.
Board Member Thomas?
Here.
Board Member Blasey?
Here.
Board Member Clem is absent. Chair Peterson's here. Sorry.
All right. We start right off with a report of boards, commissions, and committees. I believe we have a report from the Downtown Advisory Board and a project update. Do we have a staff report, or...
Mayor, that report was submitted as part of the record, and I don't believe anybody from DAB is coming tonight to speak. They were invited, but I don't think we're able to. So, the written report, I think, is their update on their actions for this year, last year, and what's coming.
All right. Are there any comments by counselors regarding that issue?
No, not good.
No? We're good. All right. We'll move on to public comment, and we do have an individual who has signed up for this evening's public comment, Ray Burstead. And this is to comment on an item that is on the agenda.
Yes.
Welcome.
Would you rather wait for that item to come up for me to testify?
Well, actually, the way we do this is to take your testimony at this point, and then later in the agenda, I believe that you are here to talk on 4.3C.
That's the one.
That's a public hearing. Would you rather wait and testify at the public hearing rather than at the public comment time?
Whichever is appropriate.
It's just an action item.
I am sorry. I assumed that you were here on another item, but you're here on 4.3C.
Yes, ma'am.
Which is the enterprise zone.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
That'd be appropriate.
So, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Peterson. Councilman and Linda Norris, thank you. My name is Raymond Burstead. I live at 262 Muirfield Avenue Southeast in Salem, Ward 4. I'm here as president of the Strategic Economic Development Corporation to talk to you about the inclusion of some property in an enterprise zone out at Mill Creek Corporate Center. The enterprise zone, traditionally, when we are recruiting companies from outside of the area, either the United States or foreign companies, the enterprise zone is one of the few real incentives we have... the few real incentives we have to offer folks. That and workforce training. In the six and a half years that I've served as president of SEDCOR, I can count dozens of times that we have not submitted on RFPs for projects that had the requirement of enterprise zone. So, I have not submitted the Mill Creek Corporate Center on those projects. I think that this action, if you take this action, you're only putting in roughly 10 percent of the property at the Mill Creek Corporate Center, 53 acres out of nearly 600 acres. Would be very appropriate to have that ability out there to attract industry with the enterprise zone incentive. And that's basically what I want to say.
Thank you. Are there questions for Mr. Bursted? Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And you're in agreement of that actual location inside of the Mill Creek Corporate Center?
One sees the perfect place.
Is the most advantageous for that?
One sees perfect.
Excellent. Thanks.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming down tonight to support this item. Thank you. All right, we'll move on to the consent calendar.
Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar with following poll, 4.3A by Counselor Dickey.
All right. It's been, there's been a motion by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Nanki to approve the consent calendar with the exception of the item 4.3A, which is polled by Member Dickey. Is there discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. And we have no information reports this evening. We do have special orders of business. Counselor Dickey, would you care to speak to your poll?
Yeah, I'll move staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Member Dickey and seconded by Member Tesler to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion?
Yes, I actually have question for staff on this issue here. This is a motion to, the issue is to transfer $35,000 out of the North Gateway Urban Renewal Funds from Toolbox Loan Program to the Toolbox Grant Program. I'm just curious if there, because it looks like this is a program that has not been very well utilized over the last nine, eight, nine years. It's been a while. So, I'm just curious if there's a reason for the move. Is there possibility by moving these funds over that there will be some, a business or multiple businesses that will be able to take advantage of the program that they can't do now with the funds not being transferred?
Yes, thank you. For the record, I'm John Wales, Director of Urban Development Department. Maybe the first thing I could say, just to set the picture of why this action item is here tonight, this is a request that the Advisory Board, the North Gateway Advisory Board, asked us to bring forward. They made this recommendation back in March. And the reason for it is that you are correct in your assessment that the loan program has not been well-tapped in the past few years, but the Toolbox, but the grant program has. And there've been a variety of projects that have applied for that, and I think the staff report speaks to basically a three-to-one leverage that has occurred with the investment, the private investment that has occurred. And of course, the hope is that that will translate into increased tax value as well. So, that's the reason it is here, and there is an opportunity that there may be, since the maximum amount of a grant is 50,000, and I think the staff report alludes to the fact that there are two interest parties, that we could be seeing $100,000 worth of grant requests. And that's why the agency, the Advisory Board, was interested in us forwarding to that to you. Having said that, your observation is also correct. It hasn't gone unnoticed to us that this program has not been heavily utilized, partly because of the economy, partly just because of the nature of the types of businesses that we were trying to target. And there, we started a conversation actually with the Advisory Board as recently as last week, I believe the mayor may have even been there, to maybe look at a different approach, incentive process for creating investment and development in the URA. And we started a conversation where we may, rather than looking at building improvements alone or facade improvements as such, or typical Toolbox program, to start looking at it more from a perspective of incenting job growth, which we've done out in the Fairview. And so, that conversation. But in the meantime, this program is in place, and that's why this request has come forward.
Yes, Counselor Dickey.
Thanks, that explains it. And I might have even said it in here, and I missed it, the 100,000. I forgot the 50, there was 50,000 limit, so you have to get it up above that 100,000 to be able to do two. Just a quick question about either the grant and/or the loan program. Are those funds available for startup businesses or businesses who want to come in and locate? Or are they for businesses that are already established?
Well, they're, maybe, I'll have Jill Corcoran speak to that, but my understanding is it's for anybody that is interested in using the money, meeting the requirements of the program. To really take advantage of it, you would need a building or a property in existing in the urban renewal area in order to apply. But Jill, maybe you could just speak.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Board Members. I don't know which one's the microphone. I'm Jill Corcoran, Project Coordinator with Urban Development, and John is correct. Pretty much, it's open to anyone. It could be either a tenant or an owner. It could be a new tenant or a new owner. If it's a tenant, then the owner has to concur that they can do the kind of work that they want to do.
Great, thank you. Okay. Yes, Member Bennett?
Yes, so, the program, I want to, I'm not sure I understood this yet. We haven't had anyone come in for a loan.
Not since 2003.
So, what we would do is increase the amount in the grant program so it can be given away. My understand, there's no loan involved, or is it leveraged, or? I'm not sure I understand.
There are two programs. Actually, there are a couple, but there are two, a grant and a loan program. A person could come in for a loan, which they would have to qualify for up to $100,000. They could also come in for a grant.
Excuse me, Jill, could you speak a little more directly into the microphone?
I don't know if it's, okay. They could apply for a grant as well, and there's an exterior grant, if it's visible from the right-of-way, or interior grant. Each one of those is a maximum of $25,000, and they would have to match that $25,000 or whatever amount that they want to get a grant for at an equal amount. They can't use those funds for the loan. So, you could combine them. No one has asked for a loan. I think part of it, from what I'm seeing and hearing from people, is that in this economy, it seems that it's better for them to save their money and get a match and not go into debt. The alternate thing that I hear is they would need more than $100,000, and so that's, we can't go above that limit at this point. It's been, if I may, I will say with the grant program, it has created a lot of leverage beyond the amount that people have matched. People have spent more on their building, not necessarily only on the portion that we did or participated in, but they went further and spent quite a few, quite a few hundred thousand dollars total.
So, the objective of these, both of these programs, it sounds like, is, well, there is some interior work you can do, but primarily a facade improvement? Is that the idea of, are there targeted areas out on?
No, and that's, that is one of the, one of the issues we're looking at. All of the grants have been throughout North Gateway, which is over 900 acres, so it's not quite the same as downtown, which this was fashioned after. But we do still have some people interested, so that is why we came forward to ask for the change, to support the Advisory Board's opinion.
I kind of, I've just tried this out on you, see if you agree with me or if I'm wrong and how I'm wrong. This sounds like a program designed for a more urbanized or a more concentrated area of buildings than we see out on Portland Road, and that this may just be in total the wrong program, whether it's loans or grants, that we actually ought to be looking at some alternative program. So, I'm kind of reluctant to join in moving money into grants for a program that doesn't work as loans and probably doesn't work. Maybe doesn't work.
That's a fair interpretation of this. What we've concluded is that obviously this, the loan program hasn't succeeded. I think your characterization of the program as being very effective in a dense urban setting, such as downtown, of which this was modeled after, where the results are immediate and one property adjacent to the other can benefit and see that immediate benefit. What, but having said that, what the Advisory Board has indicated is that they still feel even the grant program has had value, it's had leverage. It's, it has provided a benefit to the tax rolls of which this program was set up to do. So, I think council would have that option to, as you just mentioned, Counselor Bennett, to say, I don't feel why I want to move this, any more money into the grant at this time till we look at the whole. But what we've been brought, what we have brought is the recommendation of the Advisory Board.
Counselor Dickey?
Thank you. Yeah, I was just going to say, I have some reservation as well. I will go ahead and support this because I know that the Advisory Board is pretty conscientious about how the funds in the total of the urban, this urban renewal area. I mean, they're pretty good watchdogs of that. But I do have some reservations, which is why I asked the question about, can it be used for new business? Maybe, because I'm thinking of areas along there that maybe it's not a building that needs a new facade, but maybe it needs a building with some business in it, a job creation, as you referred to. So, having said that, and it sounds like there might be some opportunities, people waiting, hoping to get this grant that are, you know, ready to go. So, I would like to see maybe in the future some other options, maybe for this area, because this one clearly has been many, many years and not very well utilized. So, having said that, I'll support it because I know the, because I want to respect the recommendation of the board, but from here, I would love to see some options that we might be able to explore.
Well, I would like to make a few comments. I share Member Dickey's concerns about the long period of time that has elapsed when no one has appeared to be at all interested or perhaps capable. But it's been nine years, and all during those hot real estate years, no one was seeking these funds either. And I'm very concerned that we need to do things in that urban renewal area that truly build the tax base, that increase the value of the property. And I'm always a little nervous about facade improvements, particularly in a grant program. I want to be certain that the business or the property owner truly have the capital to be able to do the kinds of improvements that Ms. Corcoran has mentioned and to stay in the urban renewal area and run that business or manage that property so that it is an enhancement. I am concerned about that when I hear that no one can make the loan, can work the loan, but they could receive the $100,000. I think what I'd like to see at some point is just some report from staff about how effectively the grant monies did stimulate further investment on the properties. I don't need that in order to support this motion, but I would like to see just how those grants have stimulated and where they've stimulated the improvements. That would be particularly good. But I would support this motion, but I certainly agree also with Member Dickey and Member Bennett that perhaps we really need to look at a different kind of program. It's a very, it's a very individualized area. It's not downtown, it's not Fairview, but it's a wonderful mix. We just need to maximize those mixes. All right, any further comments? Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, in the same light, you know, we have the potential for, you know, targeting, grouping, similar to the block demonstration type projects for downtown, but the facade improvement, as well as, we had the work session on the different kinds of industrial zones, and some of these facilities have been there for a long time and they are mature. So, a facade upgrade could actually make it more attractive for someone else to do something or bring something new in in the area as well. So, all of those areas need to be at least attended to.
I think that's a good point. Okay, are we ready for the question? All right, it's been moved by Member Bennett and seconded by Member Dickey? No, it was moved by Member Dickey, seconded by Member Tesler. Thank you very much for your help. And we will now call for the question. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right. I see no unfinished business or public hearings for the Urban Renewal Agency, so this meeting is adjourned. All right, we'll call to order the Salem City Council Meeting of June 11th, 2012. Would the recorder please call the roll?
Counselor Bennett?
Here.
Counselor Tesler?
Present.
Counselor Nanki?
Here.
Counselor Claussen?
Here.
Counselor Dickey?
Here.
Counselor Thomas?
Here.
Counselor Blazy?
Here.
Counselor Clem is absent. Mayor Peterson?
Here. Thank you. We have additions and deletions on the agenda. Counselor Bennett, would you please introduce those changes?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move approval of additions, deletions, and revisions. You've received two sets.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki to approve the additions and deletions to the agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. We have time for council comment. Are councilors desiring to have a few minutes to speak? I will start the ball rolling. I was very appreciative of Country Financial for sponsoring the Country Kids Relay. A week ago Saturday, there were over 3,000 runners, there were over 150, maybe more than that, volunteers, and it was a joyous day for all. And I just want to say to all of the children and their families who supported them in their training and getting there and doing the run, it was a great day for all. Last year, I wasn't able to attend, and Counselor Tesler was there. They said you fired the gun better than I did, so.
I didn't shoot anybody.
No, no, you didn't shoot anybody. That was my goal, too. So, anyway, I really feel that it's events like that out in the community that really tell us about the health and the wellness and the soundness of our community. It was a great day. Other comments? All right, we'll move along. Public comment. I do have an agenda item here. Public comment on item 3.3. Is that it? Ross Swartzen-Duber.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. My name is Ross Swartzen-Duber. I live at 3655 Xena Road Northwest, and I also operate the Pop-Up Art Gallery in the Salem Center Mall. And I would like to speak to 33I, approval of the agreement between Salem Art Association and the City of Salem for 365 Ferry Street. And I would like to add what our experiences with this gallery have done downtown. Salem Creative Network operates the Pop-Up Art Gallery, and we opened that on November 2nd of last year, across from the food court. And the main goal with the property owners was to have the lights on so that new tenants would be interested in the property. And within three months, we had a new tenant for that spot. And we were given a larger space, which is the Borders Bookstore, or the former Borders and Walden Books. And already, we've been there only three weeks, and we've had more... And already, we've been there only three weeks, and we've had more interest for leasing this. And that's just within the mall. Also, we have approached other property owners in downtown, specifically the 260 Liberty and 280 Liberty, and we are just basically putting installations in there. And I don't know if you've seen that downtown, but that's the old WH Grant Building and also the old First National Bank. And we're receiving rave appreciation for brightening people's days. And I see that, you know, with more organizations involved with this type of effort, we can fill every vacant storefront downtown with art. Right now, in the gallery, we have about 100 artists that are local, and they're selling their art. And I think if we have more vacant storefronts that are targeted by the city in conjunction with these other arts organizations, we're going to be able to increase the vitality downtown and also get more tenants. Since we've moved into the 280 and 260 properties, a restaurant has signed a lease across the street at 241 Liberty. Also, Subway is going into the old Cherry Red space. And basically, you know, the more activity these business owners are seeing coming downtown, the more likely they're going to be to invest. And I would also like to ask if there are any formal procedures to get other city property that is vacant, that needs art? And also, other city property in the form of possibly the Union Street Bridge and having an art fair there, I'm wondering if there is any procedure on how to make that happen. Once again, thanks for your time. I'd like to say cultural literacy and the arts are growing in Salem, and they are responsible for a good part of our community and economy. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Appreciate what you're doing for the arts. It was nice running into you down at the mall and seeing your gallery. I was very pleased to see that. Thanks for coming. Are there questions from councilors? All right, thank you very much. All right, we'll move to the consent calendar. Counselor Bennett, will you please introduce the consent calendar?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the consent calendar.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Nanki to accept the consent calendar as published. Is there any discussion? Counselor Nanki.
I was just curious if staff was planning on getting back to Mr. Schwarzenbruber in regards to the process that he.
To his questions. Yes, we will contact you. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. All right, then we'll call for the question on the consent calendar. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we are moving right along to public hearings. Give you a moment to readjust yourselves here. Okay, will the recorder please introduce the first public hearing?
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony.
I am sorry, we'll wait a moment longer. I was a little too hasty. All right, we're ready to resume, and I will now open the hearing, the public hearing and ordinance bill number 1012, and ask the recorder to please introduce it.
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony regarding ordinance bill number 10-12 relating to the Salem Municipal Airport, renumbering, amending, and repealing sections of Salem Revised Code, Chapter 9.
Thank you, and welcome.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council. My name is John Pascal. I'm the airport administrator at the Salem Municipal Airport. Hopefully, you can hear me okay. The issue before the council this evening is, shall the council enact ordinance 10-12 revising, renumbering, and repealing certain sections of Salem Revised Code, Chapter 9? As a brief background, Chapter 9 sets forth the policies and procedures related to the management and operation of the Salem Municipal Airport, and it also acts as the airport's minimum standards for commercial aeronautical operations as required by FAA grant assurances. Now, specific portions of Chapter 9 that brought about this current effort are related primarily to tenant ground lease term lengths, which was Section 9.052, and options for renewals to ground leases, Section 9.054. Those two sections are ambiguous and limit the airport manager's authority to renew leases for acceptable periods of time. Airport tenants requested clarity and certainty in their ground lease terms and suggested that airport management update Chapter 9 to allow for more flexible, long-term, and more stable lease terms. As such, proposed changes to the airport's ground lease policy have been in process for nearly a year, including two public meetings with tenants held in October and November 2011, from which city staff received significant feedback and suggestions. Enacting these changes to Chapter 9 will allow for lease policy updates, renewals of expired leases, and longer terms for both current and future leases. In summary, the proposed changes to Chapter 9 will accomplish the following. It will repeal Section 9.052 for term lengths and 9.054, options for renewal. It adds Section 9.125, which provides for city council approval of a standard lease form, and adds Section 9.130, which restates part of the repealed Section 9.052 related to term lengths. These three sections represent the primary purpose of the Chapter 9 changes in this current effort. However, while Chapter 9 was being reviewed and revised, city staff, including airport and urban development, real estate staff, worked closely with legal counsel to accomplish some other important updates to the chapter. These changes include clarifying certain terms, definitions, and clauses throughout the chapter, renumbering and reorganizing various parts of the chapter, revising Section 9.010 for appeals of airport management decisions to be brought before a hearings officer, adding Section 9.140, which provides for appeals of airport land appraisals to be brought before a hearings officer, clarifying Section 9.020 related to commercial operator licensing requirements. It eliminates a specific square footage requirement for commercial operations, and adding language better defining licensing requirements for temporary commercial aeronautical activity. In its meeting of May 15th, 2012, the Airport Advisory Commission voted in favor of recommending to the city council enactment of this ordinance. In terms of one next step, staff is developing standard lease templates and guidelines which will reflect the enacted changes to Chapter 9, not, Chapter 9, excuse me, and intend to bring those templates back to the city council for approval in accordance with the new Section 9.125 of the code. This is anticipated to occur in July or August 2012, which will then allow airport management to begin the process of renewing expired leases. Finally, staff recommends the city council enact ordinance 10-12 revising, renumbering, and repealing certain sections of Salem Revised Code, Chapter 9, as presented. Thank you.
Thank you. We now have one individual who has signed up, Ron Stirba?
Stirba.
Stirma?
Stirba.
Stirma? Stirba? If I put my glasses on, it would help tremendously. I apologize. All right, thank you. Please come to the microphone, introduce yourself.
Madam Mayor and council members and city staff, I'm here as a owner, hangar owner here at Salem Airport, and I am definitely in support of this ordinance. There has been too many public hearing meetings going on too long, and we need to define these items. And I've been reassured by staff, and again, going to the public meetings, that I've been assured that the new dialogue is going to make it clearer so we can come up with revisions that provide a more progressive dialogue between aircraft owners and staff. And that's what we need. And after having that pointed out, I understand that you folks, the city staff, can't do your job because the wording isn't there, but you're willing to work with the aircraft owners and the commercial operators, and that's what I want for a progressive city airport. And so at this time, I want to say that the letter that's on hand here from Duane and Janet Taylor shows some concerns, and I, too, follow along with those concerns. And I was advised here by the staff that these items need to be addressed, but they can't be unless these revisions are done first. And so I'm here to support that. My name is Ron Stirba. I live at 520th Street Northeast here in Salem, Ward 1.
Mr. Stirba, thank you so much. Are there questions from councilors? Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for coming down, Ron.
You're welcome.
In the same letter that you just referred to from the Taylors, in the second, third paragraph, it talks about another meeting that was supposed to take place in March or April. Were you expecting another meeting to take place that did not? Or were you aware of the potential for one?
I was taking the recommendations that were listed on the boards at the meetings that the, oh, I don't remember her name, but it was part of the city staff that put everything that was requested.
Oh, Courtney Knox.
Yes, Courtney Knox. And so I was assured, as well as coming down to urban development, that I could get those items in. It looked like to me that this was what we needed to get the dialogue moving between the city staff. And based upon the economics of this city, that footprint is going to be laid with this revision. And I may not like every part of it, but we're wasting a lot of staff time in the city, and I don't want to waste time. I want the city to be progressive. Don't need any more meetings. We can work things out with the city staff and the airport administrator. One of the finest airport administrators I've ever met in my life is sitting right here, and I'm glad the City of Salem hired him. And again, no, I wasn't really expecting any more meetings because of the fact that the revisions would provide a progressive dialogue and that we would work it out.
Okay, I'll bring that up to staff as well. I just wanted to see if you were of the same mindset, that there was supposed to be a meeting that never occurred.
I would love to have a lot more things put in, but you can't waste time with meetings. You have to be progressive.
Come on, that's all we do here is meet. That's our job.
I don't want any more meetings. I want to move on. That's why I want.
Thanks.
I can take my shoe off and put it up here, but I don't think I need to do that at this point. I've met quite a few of the staff members, and you can't be in agreement with everything, but the fact is, you need to be progressive. And that's why I'm here, and that's why I support this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Well, thank you very much. We appreciate you coming down this evening and appreciate all of your attendance at the meetings. We've seen one another at several, and appreciate your.
Well, I'm getting a little bit better. Several years ago, I was very shaky up here and forgot my agenda items, so tonight I felt pretty confident.
You're just fine. Thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, I have one question for staff, and I'll ask John Pascal to come back up. Oh, I am sorry, yes, would you like to speak? Please introduce yourself, and I'll add you to this list.
Yes, I didn't realize that this was on the agenda for tonight. That's why I didn't sign up until I read through the material. My name is Apostle Paul Young. My office at 4705 Portland Road Northeast. And I would add my concurrence to the letter from Duane and Janet Taylor. I am a pilot, and we have plans in the future of leasing and building a hangar. And when I look at some of these concerns, I had looked into this a little while back, and when I look at some of the concerns on the length of lease and what could be done at the end of the lease, it makes me very tenuous about leasing here, because it would be a very significant outlay of capital for the hangar of the size that we're going to need. And I would hate to have to go to another airport to do that. So I would say, all of the concerns that they laid out in here, I would wholeheartedly agree with and ask you to consider those in your decision.
Okay, thank you. Are there questions from staff, excuse me, from councilors? Counselor Nanki.
Yeah, just similar question as asked Mr. Clemm Stirba in regards to, oh, no, never mind. You can't answer that. I thought we were asking questions of staff.
Oh, well, we will.
Excuse me.
All right, we will. We'll get to that, okay. All right, well, thank you.
Well, I'm trying to read things as well.
Thank you very much.
I hate it when they land on my desk at the end.
All right. Mr. Pascal, I have one question, and that is that, actually, I have two questions. And one is that the provision in the ordinance revisions as presented to us requires that appeals on the terms of the lease, I believe, would be appealed to a hearings officer?
Madam Mayor, I believe that portion was appeals of land appraisals.
Oh, yes, thank you.
Would be subject to a hearings officer.
How do we do that now?
I'm not 100% sure, but my understanding is, and John may know, or I may defer to council, but I believe that those come before the city council, although it may be best for me just to defer since I don't have the answer to that question.
I just wanted to find out what the process was.
Maybe I can.
Yes.
Madam Mayor, John Wales, Urban Development Department. Currently, there isn't a clear process in the lease on how those appeals are made. Actually, I'm sorry, let me back up. There is a process within the leases on how that occurs, and it requires one entity to do an appraisal of the city. If the party that is in question doesn't like it to do their own appraisal and to try to reconcile them, or actually, the appraisers would try to reconcile them, and then if we're not able to do that, then a third appraisal is done, and that becomes fixed. That's what the leases speak to. There have been times in the past where the council has gotten involved and heard appeals of this, but the actual terms of the lease are quite specific. This is to put it more in line with the way other city questions abroad or appeals are dealt with, and to make it through an appeals officer without having to go into a long, extended, protracted, that we do an appraisal, they do an appraisal, we do a third appraisal. We've had instances where that's taken many years in some cases.
Thank you.
Yeah, just to make sure that we're abundantly clear, there is no appeal to the city council under the current leases. It's to be handled through an appraisal process that's binding on both parties.
So that's the way we're doing it now?
Well, we had a sort of complicated situation recently where that was not, we did not follow the lease terms. But the lease terms are very clear, that it's our appraisal. If there's dissatisfaction, the other side gets their appraisal. If those appraisals aren't consistent, then the parties go to, basically, it's a binding third appraisal. And it's a time-consuming and expensive process. And the process is being proposed, and the new ordinance will be much less time-consuming and much less expensive for all parties.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that background on that. Okay. All right, are there questions? Counselor Claussen. Councilor Clausen?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Along those same lines, what do we do in other situations similar to this in other city departments? I looked at the city manager. I guess I don't even know where that might occur.
So, Ms. Wells, maybe you can talk about leases for parcade space, that sort of thing.
The lease for the parcade space.
This is really, hangar leases are kind of an unusual circumstance for us. I don't appeal--
Yeah, the airport leases are unique in that they are all based on, and it specifies very clearly in the lease how the appraisal works and how the increases work. In the parcade appraisals, and I may have to get Diane Majors down here just to refresh my memory, but typically, those have a, and they may vary, but they would have a base rent that's established with an escalator every certain number of years. That would be built into the lease. That would be pretty well-defined in the lease. When the lease terminates, then they would be renegotiated at the market rate at that time. Is that how the, all of them, there are probably some exceptions?
No, that's pretty much accurate. Diane Majors, Phil Property Services.
Maybe I could clarify a little bit. Where else do we have appraisals that might be appealed? I just want to make sure we're being consistent, is all I'm looking for. Are we being consistent with the way the appeal goes? Does an appeal of this nature normally go to a hearings officer?
I'm not aware of any leases where we have this factor.
I can't think of any transactions that we have, any ongoing leases that we have where we go to an appraisal. The retail leases are a much shorter term, you know, typically three, five, maybe 10 years. And so we have more of an opportunity to look at the market when the lease expires and then renegotiate a rental rate if it's appropriate.
Okay. If I may, I've got another follow-up.
Yes, certainly.
I don't want to steal Councilor Nanki's thunder, but on the, it sounds like some of the other concerns that are brought up are really addressed by creating this 9.125. And in the verbiage of 9.125 is where these conversations occur. Is that correct, the way that's kind of put together and considered by council? Some of the other concerns, as in the, you know, renewals, terms, things along those lines?
A lot of the specific language is not, is not covered in Chapter 9 at all. Chapter 9 is more of kind of an overriding document. The leases themselves, or a lease policy or lease guidelines, would specify things like term lengths, which can vary based on, you know, level of investment, square footage, those sorts of things. So there's not, there's not set language in Chapter 9 for those types of things. I'm not sure if that answered your question.
Isn't, I mean, I'm looking at the staff report. It says it adds Section 9.125, which allows council-approved ground lease to be the standard form for airport ground leases. And we haven't approved a ground lease, or it's not at least in this action tonight, correct? So there's going to be conversation in the future about what that standard ground lease is, in which a lot of these questions are probably brought up and clarified. Is that correct?
That is correct. I understand your question. That's correct. The changes to Chapter 9 tonight allow us to then go forward with a standard lease form to bring back to the council. It will be the guiding document going forward. But as restrictive as Chapter 9 was, it really just didn't allow us any room to do anything beyond what we could do currently.
The purpose of this is to, is to, under state law, state law requires that the council approve all leases. And so the purpose of this is to establish a standard ground lease, standard terms and conditions, everybody gets it. If there are any changes to that lease, it has to come back to the council for approval. So the idea here is that instead of having council approve every single lease as it comes forward, you establish standard current terms and conditions, and everybody gets it, unless they want to negotiate something different, and then it has to come back to the council. If it doesn't come back to the council, and there have been changes to it, it's not a valid lease.
All right. Councilor Blasey?
We do have one question, not regarding the leases, though. One of the questions or concerns that was brought up--
Excuse me, I can't hear you.
One of the concerns that was brought up in the letter we received from the Taylors is regarding the hangar removal. At lease termination, will this new language include a discussion about that, or will that come back to us? Because that's a significant concern.
Yeah, that will be part of the terms and conditions. And I only had an opportunity to give that a cursory look because I received it late in the afternoon, but there was a little bit, it was a little bit ambiguous. I think some of the discussion in there had to do with relocation of a hangar, which would be different than removal of a hangar. It was pretty standard in an airport ground lease that at the end of the term of the lease, typically, one of three things would happen. Either the improvements would be removed at our request because we'd want the bare land back for other development, or the airport would take title to all of the improvements, and it would become city property, or we would just enter into a new lease with one of the tenants. And so those are the types of things that will be addressed in the actual, the next step that will come back before the council. And again, that's pretty standard at the end of the term of a lease. One of those three things has to happen.
Councilor, that's, that's actually not a change. If you look at Section 26 of the ordinance, the current section is 9.092, which deals with the removal of improvements upon the termination of the leasehold. So that's actually not a change to current code. The way ground leases work is that the lesssee rents the ground, they then build an improvement. When the lease expires, in most leaseholds, the title to those improvements reverts back to the lessor. So this is not a change to the code. It's currently, it's currently warranted this way, and this is the way ground leases work. You don't, you're not buying the land. It's not, it's not a perpetual lease. Once that lease is gone, either the improvements are removed, or they have to revert back to the ownership of the lessor.
All right. Councilor Nanki?
Now, I can actually ask a question. I haven't had a good chance to read through the entirety of this as well, but I'm always concerned when somebody says, "We thought we were going to have a meeting to give input," and then there's the impression that that didn't take place. So I suppose the question is, is there still a lot of things to go down the road? Is that where this meeting would have occurred, and we've just kind of slowed down, or?
Maybe I could answer that. When we started this process, we realized it was going to be at least a two-step process. Because most of the concerns that were raised had to do with options and providing more certainty as far as what happens after the initial term of the lease, there were some questions about the way the code was written or interpreted, as whether it allowed for that. And so the explanation in all the public meetings and all the correspondence that we, that we put out on this has been that we first have to amend the code, and that's what the, before the council is tonight. And then, once that is amended, then we can bring forward a lease that addresses those questions. So I'm, I think we've been clear that we were going to, and as recently as just about three or four weeks ago, that we were going forward with this. This was the schedule for tonight, but that we would have to come back to the council. There would be more discussion on the actual leases when they were ready to come for your approval. And whether that results in another meeting, that would be fine or not, that's, we can, we can make that determination.
And just to be clear, the current lesssees will have the option of entering into the new form of lease, which will be different from the old form of lease. But if they choose not to, they're still going to be under the terms of their existing lease.
Okay.
And we expect to come back to council with the master leases toward the end of July?
All right, thanks.
All right. Further questions? Councilor Clausen?
Sorry, just one quick one. When that, when that comes back, is that, I'm assuming there's some public input on that master lease, and then is that a public hearing or just form on that? Or is that just an approval by council?
You guys get to make that choice.
Okay, so it's not a required public hearing?
Not a required. It's up to council.
All right. Any further questions or testimony? All right, I will now close the public hearing. Councilor Bennett?
Madam Mayor, I move the staff recommendation.
Second. It's been moved by Councilor Bennett and seconded by Councilor Clausen to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? Councilor Tesler?
Yes, there is a slight bit of discussion. I would like to say publicly that I too have also appreciated John Pascal out at the airport. Brad, Councilor Nanki, and I have had some head-splitting moments out at the airport. And I felt, in the last year especially, that things have really started to coalesce and come together. And I really felt confident with, you know, your new leadership out there, that things were really starting to come together. And I really would like to second Mr. Sterba's comment, because I really, it's been a good welcome change, so don't ever leave. I'll find you. So thank you again. I do appreciate your hard work at the airport. There's been some really tough public meetings out there, and it's grace under pressure. So thank you.
Great. Thank you. All right. Call for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pose, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, we have a second public hearing. I'll give people a chance to adjust a little bit here.
Two F-15s fly over Friday.
Really?
They could right over the top of our buildings like that. Is that good stuff?
Whoa.
They were heading over to see each other?
Wow.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. We have, I will open the public hearing for ordinance bill 13-12, and ask the city recorder to introduce the ordinance.
The Salem City Council will not hold a public hearing to receive testimony regarding ordinance bill number 13-12 relating to fences, amending SRC 131.120, and creating new provisions to allow electric fences beyond what is currently allowed.
Thank you. And do we have staff presentation?
Yes, thank you, and good evening, Mayor, and members of council. My name is Aaron Panko, Associate Planner with the Planning Division. We are here tonight to discuss code amendment 12-01 regarding electric fences. Recently, the city has been approached by a security company, which installs and maintains electric fence security systems throughout the nation to inquire whether the city would consider admitting its code to allow electric fencing. On December 5, 2011, a motion was approved by the city council directing staff to prepare and bring back to city council for initiation amendments to the Salem Revised Code to allow electric fencing beyond what is currently allowed under the code. The Salem Revised Code currently allows electric fencing, but only can be used for the purpose of enclosing livestock in zones where keeping of livestock is in allowed use. The proposed code amendment will expand the areas where electric fences may be installed to include outdoor storage areas for any non-residential use in any industrial zoning district. The amendment will also establish development standards for installation and operation of electric fences. Development standards include limiting the maximum height of an electric fence to 10 feet in height, requiring a perimeter fence, which will provide a barrier between the electric fence and abiding property or right-of-way to prevent accidental contact, and a requirement for a two-foot separation between the electric fence and the perimeter fence. In addition, the state requires an electrical permit for the installation of electric fences. The permit will allow for an inspection of the installation. The electric fence is required to be certified by a state-approved, third-party testing facility, and shall be installed in a manner consistent with listing requirements. Warning signs are required at an interval of 60 feet in both English and Spanish, and an illustration which will alert people of the danger. Emergency shut-off is required for fire department access. Staff has researched several jurisdictions to see how other cities handled electric fences. The list here shows several cities which allow electric fences with limitations, and also listed are a few cities which prohibit electric fences. Notice of the code amendment was provided to neighborhood associations, and no comments were received. A copy of the code amendment was sent to a proponent of the electric fence code amendment for comment. A response was received May 17, objecting to four sections of the proposed code. The supplemental staff report includes a response to each of the items raised in the May 17 email. And staff recommends that the code amendment be advanced to second reading for enactment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And we do have an individual, the applicant, Michael Pate, here to testify.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor, council.
Welcome, and you have three minutes.
Thank you. Michael Pate, Century Security, Columbia, South Carolina. I really appreciate all the work that's been done on this particular amendment. However, the way it's written right now, I truly believe is going to be totally unworkable. The main reason is that it requires a listing for the product. Now, there is no standard in America that, actually, for electric security fences used for a human deterrent. There's not one out there. So everything that is installed in the United States must be field-tested. And the reference to a listing basically prohibits the use of electric security fences in the city. So I would ask that the staff and the council please review this particular section that's been mentioned and rescind it. Otherwise, I think all the time that we spend on this is probably wasted. There are a couple of others in there. One is a two-foot separation. A two-foot separation, not only in my mind, but my customers' minds, is a little too far. And there are a couple of reasons for that. One is that a two-foot separation is basically what is known in the international standards as a zone of entrapment. So someone could easily slip between the perimeter fence and the electric fence and basically be trapped there all night. Now, a lot of my customers would like that to happen. But it's, it's really not something that the international standards want to happen. The IEC or the international standards actually require a 100 to 200-millimeter separation, which is approximately four to eight inches. Almost everywhere in America, I deviate from that because we really don't deal in the metric system, so usually it's pretty close to a foot. So either the IEC standard should be applied here, or you should probably get it a little narrower than that. The other thing about two feet is it actually allows a perpetrator to actually drop in there and manipulate the system. The whole point of having a perimeter fence and the electric fence is to kind of form a unit, a cohesive unit of protection for that particular property. So we would like it to be a little bit closer so someone can't drop in between the two and actually manipulate the two fences. And those are the two main, main items on there. There were actually four. Those are probably the two that are the most onerous, and that would probably restrict the actual use of electric security fences in Salem if this was to be approved.
Okay. Thank you very much. Are there questions? Councilor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thanks for coming down. Did you get a chance to review this and comment to staff?
Yes, I did.
And you were given a response in regards to those items, or?
Yes, I was given a response in regard to those items. The response from the staff on the, on the two feet was they were willing to go to a smaller separation, but in return for that, they also wanted some other sort of mesh or a solid fence put up. And I just feel like that is basically singling me out above any other business that operates here. It's a safe product. If it wasn't safe, the staff would not recommend that you actually go forward with it. You already actually allow the use of cattle and livestock fencing. There's no perimeter fence on a cattle or livestock fence, and those fences are much more powerful than the ones I have. Much more powerful.
All right. Thank you.
Other questions from councilors? I have a couple of questions myself. So I understand from the PowerPoint that the staff person, Aaron, showed that actually there are other cities that do allow the electric fences. But now I'm confused because I had also heard that they're, if they are there, they're illegal. So I need some direction from staff on that issue.
So is this question to Mr. Phillips? The question's Mr. Phillips rather than to the speaker?
Yes, I think so.
Hello, I'm Tom Phillips. I'm the Building and Safety Administrator. A couple of things on that, that, and Aaron can concur if this is true. Albany, you had Albany up there and the City of Portland, they both have the same language that requires a third-party listing, approved third-party listing, which is exactly what we have. And it's based upon Oregon Revised Statute.
What does that mean, a third-party listing approval?
Well, to give you an idea, first of all, just a quick background, we have a state building code here in the state of Oregon. Other, other states, you know, there's some similar, but a lot of states don't have a state building code. They have it, they locally adopt it, they locally make decisions. Here, we make decisions based on its delegated authority to us from the state. So we rely on the state. And what a third-party certification is, is a type of like UL listing, where a company goes in and tests the product to make sure that it operates goes in and tests the product to make sure that it operates and it's safe according to what the manufacturer says. So it's a third-party, somebody that's from the outside that comes in and looks at it, so.
Excuse me.
So like, for instance, there is a one I pulled off the Internet today, which was a cattle one, which is a fence for cattle, and it's UL listed. And it's an appliance that has to be, have that third-party listing within the state of Oregon, so.
Uh-huh. So you're saying that we do have a third-party in the state of Oregon that can do that testing?
No, well, you know, that's a good question. Here's the dilemma that we're under. If the way that the code reads now currently, that it has to be, the product that they use for electric fences will have to be certified by a third-party which is approved by the state of Oregon.
Uh-huh.
We're required to go by what the state of Oregon says by statute. For instance, they had suggested that they do field testing to certify. Well, in the ordinance, or in the statute, what it tells us is that third-party actually has to be in concurrence with the state electrical board and the director of the consumer and business services, which means they have to be approved by them to, for a product to be certified within the state.
And we have those people in the state of Oregon that can do that?
Yeah, I'm sure there is, yep. Will they certify in this product? I have no idea. I know we have lots of contact with the UL. They're very active within all of the states, and they do a lot of listing. And it's expensive to get something listed, because again, it's a third-party listing. It's somebody coming in and testing to make sure the product's safe and that it's not going to be a fire hazard in the case of electrical or, you know, electrocute somebody or shock somebody. But also that it performs exactly the way the manufacturer says, not just the manufacturer telling you so. And most of the products that you buy today, whether appliances or things installed in your house that are mechanical, electrical, are listed, including plumbing fixtures, are listed and approved for those uses, so.
Okay. So it would seem that this product could be tested and certified. And if it were tested and certified, then could it be installed in Salem?
Absolutely. If it was tested and certified and approved by the state of Oregon, I have no choice but to approve it and allow it to be installed within the city. Now, what we would do then, is what we do with all listings, is once something is installed, we look at the listing and make sure that it's installed to the listing, according to the listing, because there's requirements that go along with that listing to make sure it's being used properly. And that's what our job would be. You know, we don't have the expertise within the city of Salem to be able to actually list or approve some, a product like this, so.
Okay. Well, it sounds to me then like perhaps this item should perhaps go back to staff and you can work with the applicant and the state then to see if it would meet those standards and we would be able to have that type of fence in Salem?
Yeah, we would be very open to doing that. Actually, even if we could get other cities that may have approved these in the past to come and sit down at the table and try to deal with how we could approve a product like this, I would be all for that, yes.
Oh, good. Okay. All right. Well, that's what I'm going to recommend, that we send this back to staff and ask staff to work with the applicant and to work with the proper other jurisdictions and see if you can bring it back to us in a form that you're confident will work and that we could pass.
Thank you.
Okay, all right. Counselor Blasey?
Would we also want to include in that a discussion about the two-foot separation? The two-foot separation, would we also want to include a request for more information on that?
That's probably a good idea. I know that the, I was told earlier today that staff agree that it can be less than two feet, and so you could work that out also. Is that right?
Thank you.
Counselor Bennett and then Counselor Nanki.
Madam Mayor, one thing I, I'm not sure if staff can probably answer this for me, is what zones this would be allowed in here in the city. That is a particularly unattractive fence, and I'd like to know where that's going to show up in my neighborhoods.
Vicki Hardin Woods, Community Development Director. The proposal is that this would be allowed only in industrial zones. That's the ordinance that you have before you.
Would it be buffered against nearby residential or other kinds of commercial uses? I mean, that, I think we ought to flash that fence back up. If you have that at a transition zone between an industrial and your local Dairy Queen, that's a bit of a...
Steph, can we put the slide back up? I don't believe we put any, in particular buffering from zone to zone. We merely suggested that they be limited to industrial zones. So if you have one adjacent to a commercial zone, you could have that issue.
Yeah. That would be in a, potentially right up against, in fact, it almost looks like it is, a residential or commercial use in your neighborhood. And I, yeah, it's a little bit stunning. Now, it is missing, I will admit, it is missing its wall in front of it, but I'd like to know how far up it goes, whether it covers the barbed wire portion of it or just the electrical shock portion of it, because there is a barbed wire portion of this as well.
That fence looks to be about six feet tall with the barbed wire in front of it. There are actually two fences there. I'm not sure about the separation between them, maybe about six inches to a foot. The electric fence, guessing, is about 10 feet tall.
Madam Mayor, I certainly agree generally with the sending it back to staff, but I'm going to move that we deny ordinance.
All right, I'm sorry, I'm going to close the hearing.
You haven't closed the hearing, have you?
I'll close the hearing now. The hearing is now closed. All right, now we'll do.
We've got more questions for staff.
Oh, all right. If we have more questions for staff, then we'll delay the motion until we have the question. So I'm reopening the hearing, right?
Yes.
All right, reopening the hearing. All right. Who has questions of staff? Counselor Nanki and Counselor Clausen. All right, and which staff did you want to ask?
Well, my question is in regards to our work session this evening and whether or not it would be prudent to have some more restrictions on exactly where these could be placed. If we're talking about putting office uses and potentially medical offices intermixed with industrial uses, some of those may very well not be compatible. On the other hand, they may be where you want a little more security because you have a lot more members of the public inside of an industrial area as well.
Certainly, that could be done. But I would also remind you that part of that work session was about simplifying our code so that we could have clear and simple regulations so there weren't confusions. The more specific conditions you place on a certain kind of use or development standard, the more difficult and complicated the code is. So my recommendation would be that we try to be as clean about this as possible.
And essentially, that's where I was going, to get staff's response on that based on, you know, what we talked about in the work session earlier, to have staff come back and with those potentials of intermixed uses, what would staff's recommendation be? And it sounds like it's as listed in the staff report, but it'd be nice to clarify that based on those adjoining use potentials as well.
We can do that.
Counselor Clausen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was reading through the actual code again, and I answered my own question. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Any other questions? All right, now I will close the hearing. Counselor Bennett?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm not sure, and maybe the city attorney can help me, whether you table this stuff or you deny it, or do you, how do you stop this?
It depends on what you want to do.
I want to stop it.
If you table it, it goes under the table until somebody pulls it off the table. And that could be...
Do it until a date certain?
Yeah, if you do it to a date certain, then it'll come back to you on that date. You can also refer it to staff. You can also make a motion to advance it to second reading, and if that fails, it's dead.
Okay, I move return this to staff for further consideration.
All right, I'll second that.
Madam Mayor, I don't expect staff to come back with this as long as the Oregon Revised Statutes prohibit the use of this, which they do. And the day that statute changes, come on down. But I don't think we ought to be wasting council and staff time on issues that are clearly violations of state law. I'd be glad to read it to you, but it just says it quite frankly, "If you don't have a listed electrical device, you can't use it in a business." This should not be in front of us. And I hope staff next time will bring it with that in mind, so, you know, that it's legal, at least as a building product. I've dealt with building products and gone in front of some of these national certification or licensing boards. A very complicated, very expensive process and very rigorous. And there's a reason you don't see these in a lot of places. As in talking with staff a little bit about this, the reason is, most of our code is devised, our state code and the national certification, is written with the idea you don't put things out that shock people. The concept is, don't shock them. That's actually why electrical devices are installed, is not, and the way they're designed is not to shock you. So I think it's going to be a long, cold day before this shows up again. I really think we ought to just stop this, nip it in the bud. It's just a bad idea.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to send this back to staff. Any further discussion? Counselor Clausen?
So I have really not been in discussion on this except to see it on the agenda and heard some rumblings about it in the past. But maybe with kind of that outside perspective, I don't see any one product being solicited in the code that's in front of us. So I think it's critical that we remember that. I think, I agree with Counselor Bennett, though, that there are some things that it needs to go back to staff on. But a question maybe for staff would be, is there even such a thing? Are we wasting our time? I mean, is there such a thing as a listed product? Not necessarily just the product that was represented by our testimony here tonight, but if there's not even such a thing, then I don't even, I agree with Counselor Bennett, I don't think we need this back. So, but I agree that it needs to be a safe product. We don't want something out there that's really going to hurt somebody.
Okay. Any further discussion? Call for the question. All those in favor of returning this item to staff for further work, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Okay, we have a third public hearing, item C. Would the recorder please introduce ordinance bill number 14-12?
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony regarding ordinance bill number 14-12 relating to floodplain development, amending SRC Chapter 140 and creating new provisions to reduce the minimum bridge clearance over the base flood elevation.
Good evening, Mayor Peterson and city councilors. My name is Glenn Davis, Chief Development Engineer with the Public Works Department. And I'm here to discuss ordinance bill 1412, which is, proposes amendments to Salem Revised Code, Chapter 140, related to bridge construction and vertical clearance.
I'm sorry, I was busy talking and I didn't open the hearing properly. So the hearing is now open. Go ahead. Oh, and the city recorder needs to introduce it.
The Salem City Council will now hold a public hearing to receive testimony regarding ordinance bill number 14-12 relating to floodplain development, amending SRC Chapter 140 and creating new provisions to reduce the minimum bridge clearance over the base flood elevation.
Good evening again, Mayor Peterson and councilors. My name is Glenn Davis. I'm with the Public Works Department, Chief Development Engineer. I'm here to discuss proposed amendments to Salem Revised Code, Chapter 140, related to bridge clearance and bridge construction and vertical clearance. So our current code requires bridges to be constructed three feet above base flood elevation. The term "base flood elevation" is also known as the 100-year flood elevation, meaning that is the elevation which has a 1% chance of occurring in any given year. The three-foot clearance is measured from the water surface elevation to the bottom of the bridge structure, as shown on this very rough schematic here, three-foot dimension. The proposed code amendment reduces the minimum clearance from three feet to one foot for new vehicular bridges. The standard is reduced further for bridge replacements and new pedestrian bridges. These provisions are consistent with ODOT's bridge construction standards and also with FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program requirements. For a brief bit of background, bridges replaced as part of the streets and bridges bond have required variances because of this requirement for three feet of clearance. Without the variances, the Capitol Street Bridge, shown here, would have been raised three feet or more, which would have had a significant impact on the transportation system and would have limited access to neighboring properties because of having to elevate it. A number of public notices have been mailed and posted in the local newspaper in accordance with the city's procedures ordinance, and no comments have been received. So staff recommends that the city council advance the ordinance to second reading for enactment, and this concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much. I don't believe that anyone has signed up to testify, so we'll proceed to questions of staff. Do councilors have questions? Counselor Nanki and then Counselor Clausen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question in regards to how many 100-year floods have we had in the last 12 years? But the force...
Two, Counselor Nanki.
The force exerted on the bridge structure, knowing that we had an event that was, you know, much greater than a 100-year flood event, would that have impacted any of our bridges and would we see potential for damage to those? Or as something comes out over the banks, is that energy dissipated to some extent?
Peter Fernandez, Public Works Director. The, which is so much easier to say than interim deputy city manager, which I continue to be.
Well, you need to add it on to the other title then.
No, in fact, we have not seen, most of our bridges meet the one foot, and what we see, for example, the damage at Winter Street is actually scour underneath the piers. There's no damage to the, the concrete can take the water. You know, if there were, you know, debris at a high rate of speed hitting the bridge, you know, on the side, that could cause something. But we don't see, that's not the kind of issues that we see. What we're seeing is scour underneath the piers, so this is really not, not an issue. What we found is it was somebody's good idea at some point to put three feet in the code. We couldn't remember where that came from, but obviously it was us. And it was an additional two feet over what's required. What we found is we started to replace bridges, is that, you know, we couldn't meet it unless we started limiting property or taking properties. And in a case like Winter Street that we're going to have to replace, we couldn't even make it work unless we got a variant. So it just, it's a nice idea, it's a nice safety factor, it's not that critical, and it doesn't work.
And the one foot meets code, or?
It will.
Is equivalent of what other jurisdictions are doing?
It meets the ODOT standards and the FEMA standards, yes.
Thanks.
Counselor Clausen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I've been interested in all things flood since January. So as Counselor Tesler and Bennett can attest to. So the only question I have would be, it's kind of a two-pronged question. One, does, I'm assuming there's no adverse impact on our insurance rate as the city, and then two, there's no adverse impact on the city's insurance rating for our residents?
Go ahead, Glenn. I'm assuming you're talking about our community rating system with FEMA.
Yes, I was not privy to what it's called, but yeah.
Sure. We are what's called, we are a, we receive a discount for flood insurance as a city.
Right.
And this is not something we're receiving a discount for, so there would be no impact on that rating.
Okay, so it doesn't hurt us?
No.
Thanks, that's all.
Okay, other questions? Okay, other questions? All right. Thank you very much. I will close the public hearing. Counselor Bennett, would you please introduce this item?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move the staff, yes, Madam Mayor, I move the staff recommendation.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Tesler to move the staff recommendation. Is there discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you very much. We have one special order of business this evening, and that's a report from the Marion Pope Food Chair. And Ron Hayes, I appreciate your patience. Appreciate you coming down tonight. The floor is yours.
Good evening, my name is Ron Hayes. I'm the President and Marion Pope Food Chair, 1660 Salem Industrial Drive. It's my pleasure to present to the council again, as I've done in the past. People always ask me sort of, "How you doing?" I'm doing fine. But really, the question should be, "How is our community doing?" I think that's the more important question that we're looking at within the context of when people ask me that question. So, I'm always sort of wondering how I answer that question. I guess we ought to ask the right question, is how's our community doing? And the recession started in 2000, by our statistics, started late in 2007, 2008. And since that time, it's been a relentless rise in the amount of people needing services. Brought a couple illustrations to show you a little bit of that. This, as you guys know, I've done a lot of mapping around our area. We've mapped poverty in the whole Two County area. We've also mapped all of the free and reduced lunches to get more current data. This was the data, and the key here is the red counties. The red counties are where over 50% of the kids are on free or reduced lunches. And of that, about 80, 83% at this particular time in 2006, 2007, were on the free lunches, which was the more severe situation for kids. That's where it was as we went into the recession. This is where we are today. Big, big changes that we're seeing. If we look at the Salem Kaiser School District, we were about 50% were on free and reduced lunches back in 2006, 2007. Right now, we're at 60% and Salem Kaiser are on free and reduced lunches. This is what the city of Salem's, what Salem Kaiser School District looks like, which is very close to the Salem area, is this particular arena. I made a presentation to Salem City Club and we talked, the conversation was the tale of two cities. And sort of, it shows here very evidently that the north and east are much more severely affected than the south and the west within respect of that. But that's still not saying that everything is good in the south or the west. We see some tremendous needs as well in all those areas. Last year, we've had an increase of about, about 25% more people applying to get food boxes. That's a pretty significant increase. And that increase mirrors across the United States. One of the things I think we need to be aware of is that we're not the biggest emergency food provider in this area. The actually SNAP benefits, or food stamps, as we used to call them, is the biggest provider. In Marion and Pope Counties, last year, $125 million went out in food stamps. We see nationally an increase of about 76% increase since 2007 of people getting SNAP benefits. And about 130% increase in the monies going out into SNAP benefits across the United States. Right now, those monies come from the farm bill, and that's being debated right now in the Senate following the House's resolution, which calls for 1.7% reduction in funding for food stamps. For our area, every percent reduction is about $1 million of food, A, that we lose. And if you combine that with no factor for inflation, the increase is even more so, more dramatic as a result of that. Just want to say that right now, we're distributing across the Two County area about 180,000 to 200,000 pounds of food a week. This last year, we did $11.5 million of both food and money in our program, and 80% of that's donated. And so, our community has really stepped up with respect to that. The other thing I want to emphasize is that we've made a strong commitment to nutrition. You hear about people talking about food insecurity. We've changed the discussion to talk about nutrition insecurity because we're concerned also not only about the amount of food we're giving out, but also the quality and meeting nutritional standards. And one last thing, we're starting an event this summer. It's a Latin music festival. Mark your calendars for August 18th. And get down there, and it's going to be a Latin music festival. The lead singer, the lead group will be the Greg Rowley Band. Greg Rowley was the lead singer for founding band for Santana. So, it should be, should be an excellent thing for bringing in some revenues to help our city.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hayes. We appreciate so much the work that you do and the innovation and ingenuity that you've brought to the position and to the Marion Pope Food Chair has been quite remarkable. Are there questions from councilors? Counselor Nanki.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for coming down. I have some eggs I'm going to bring to you, now that chickens are allowed inside of the city. Maybe even three dozen or-
Or you could show them to your neighbors.
Well, that, but I know there's a need as well. My neighbors can wait. Some of your people can't wait as long.
Sure.
Question in regards to activities-
Yes.
-that people can get involved with and how they contact you and kind of, what kind of a lead time? Because I have a young gentleman and some friends who actually want to do something for the community, be that, you know, repackaging large quantities into smaller baskets. What kind of lead time notice?
They can appear, and we'll use them. We have volunteers there all the time. We've had 2,200 distinct people, volunteers last year, provide about, I would say probably around 20, 25,000 volunteer hours in our agency alone. And this year, the Statesman Journal readers voted us number one nonprofit, and we all, for the third year in a row, we're also voted top place to volunteer as well. So, they'll be well utilized in a variety of ways and sort of fit their interests.
Excellent. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Thanks again for coming. We appreciate you being here. All right, we have no unfinished business before us this evening. There are a couple of information reports in your packets. If you have questions of staff for any of, on any of those reports, we'll move along to ordinances. We have no first readings, but we have a second reading. Would the recorder please introduce that ordinance? Ordinance Bill number 9-12 relating to legislative land use proceedings and declaring an emergency. Counselor Dickey?
Aye.
Counselor Thomas?
Aye.
Counselor Blazy?
Aye.
Counselor Bennett?
Aye.
Counselor Clem is absent. Counselor Tesler?
Aye.
Counselor Nanki?
Aye.
Counselor Claussen?
Aye.
Mayor Peterson? Aye. Thank you. And we have two individuals who've signed up for public comment, Ron Sturba and then Ross Schwarzenbruber.
Good evening, Mayor, Madam Mayor, and staff and city council members. Ron Sturba, 520th Street Northeast, Ward 1, here in Salem. This past weekend, as a resident, I got to enjoy the Collins Foundation presentation of the World War II aircraft at Salem Airport. And I really loved the outpouring in the community because I want to say over a couple of days, even though there was one day weather delay, that there was several thousand people that came out. One of the things that disturbed me, I have a couple of pictures here, and the screen's dark on me here. What I observed were the handicap parking areas in front of the city-owned restaurant, which is the flight deck and the parking lot. And the city has not painted a parking lot in that 20 years up there. And I think that's disgusting that we haven't provided that for our handicapped people, as well as the other parking stripes in the parking lot. People were parking everywhere. They were parking at points where you couldn't park two cars because they took up one and a half. And I think the city should at least spend some money to put these stripes on the parking lot at the airport, restaurant there. Number two, I have the visitors here, they're all standing. And what I have is a proposal, I would like to get some self-help funds to buy benches. I have volunteers, and we will install them along the sidewalk. This is the north grass area from the restaurant. And people are just standing, just standing all over. And I think, just like any other park in the city, we should have seating, some type of seating arrangement. And I have a group of volunteers who are willing to put those in. All we need is some money to buy those benches from self-help funds. And here's another example, a gentleman just came out and he's leaning against the post. And I think this is one asset that the city has that we haven't really touched base with. And there's a lot of people who come out with their families, and if you wanted some peaceful time, you could come to the airport and just sit there. It's very nice. So, at this point, I, as a citizen, ask the city to provide funds for painting and striping of that parking lot. And I'll exercise my right as a citizen to pursue funding for those benches.
Great.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. We appreciate your support for the airport and your interest in making it a more lively and more comfortable spot for the public.
Thank you.
Questions? Counselor Tesler?
I just wanted to comment that this weekend, I was, on Sunday, I was sitting in my backyard and saw what we at first thought was the Enola Gay, which it wasn't. But it was kind of cool to see that old bomber plane fly. One of the kind of neat benefits during the airshow is not having to go to the airport. You can just sit in my backyard and watch the airplanes. But yeah, that was really neat. And then I saw Tiger Moth earlier, so, okay, that explains everything. Okay. So, thank you for that. It was pretty fun.
I was really surprised to find out how many people said thanks for bringing that here because they're the ones that provided that flag back there with freedom. And when they do that, makes the hair stand up on their arms and they stand proud. And a lot of people don't know that this was a military base, Salem. And so, again, thanks to the community and the staff, and please support our airport. I really appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I know my husband was out there watching that airplane over and over, too. We enjoyed that. Thank you. Okay, Ross Schwarzenbruber. Hadn't seen you in a while, Ross, and now twice in one night.
Yes, thanks again, Madam Mayor and councilors. My name is Ross Schwarzenbruber, and tonight, I'd like to announce my candidacy for state rep of House District 23, which surrounds Salem. It's a rural district. And I'm visiting all the government meetings in the district and around the district to kind of say what I would bring to collaborating within the district between urban and rural issues. There is a huge discrepancy between income, access between rural and urban. And I think that experience in the urban areas with the downtown revitalization and also programs like Solarize Salem, I can bring a better relation to the district. And bringing up the Solarize Salem program, we'll be doing our third year this year. And it's really incredible how much the price has dropped, and it's simply because of these types of programs. And I don't want to mention it in front of Counselor Claussen because he got it in for 540 last year. We're almost down to 450 per watt installed, which is incredible. And we're seeing surplus of renewable energy, especially solar panels, that are ready to be put in Salem, and we're expanding the program to four counties. So, I don't want to keep you guys anymore, but if you have any questions, feel free to call me or email me. It's ross@friendsofross.org. Thanks.
Great, thank you very much. Are there any questions for Mr. Schwarzenbruber? All righty. Thank you again for coming down. All right, we have under new business this evening. I've, in your packet, you see some appointments that I made for the Board of Ethics and the Civil Service Commission. And also, earlier this evening, in our consent calendar, there were reports as to other commissions and committees that we filled. And I encourage the public to look at the lists that are on the city's website or call any one of us at any time for information about the openings on our boards and commissions and committees. We work very hard to really bring the community right into working with us to set policy and direction and help guide the city. So, that's my plug for boards, commissions, and committees. And we have a councilor's item this evening. Counselor Bennett, you have an item that you want to introduce.
Yes, Madam Mayor, thank you. I move the staff, the city council instruct the staff to develop a recommendation for creation of a parking task force and an associated timeline to evaluate data and financial information prepared on the downtown parking district and make policy recommendations to the city council regarding downtown parking issues.
Second.
It's been moved by Counselor Bennett and seconded by Counselor Tesler regarding the downtown parking issues. Is there discussion? Counselor Bennett?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I, yes, we have, for many years, studied downtown parking. And during the budget cycle, if you'll recall, you decided to stop studying downtown parking because we've got five to seven years' worth of data that doesn't show a lot of changes. But you kept in place, as I recall, about $20,000 for essentially a public process to take all that data and all this information and all the public opinion around this, both among merchants, parkers, office, build, office workers, building owners, and all, and begin completing this project that's been underway for a number of years to develop policies around downtown parking, including the future of the parking district. We charge a parking tax against businesses. There's real questions about how that works, how we're going to maintain the public garages, which currently we are paying for with urban renewal dollars rather than parking dollars, and not doing so well. It's very hard to keep up. The parking garages are in real trouble. This year, we lost our security force in the parking garages in budget cuts. We need a plan that gives us a, some vision of a financially sustainable, working downtown parking system. And I believe that with that, you fulfill the council goal to work on downtown vibrancy and economic vitality. So, I would ask you to approve this.
Thank you. Counselor Nanki?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, clarification of the motion, I, it would be staff recommending whether or not to create a task force?
No.
Because I know that we've studied the bejevums out of parking downtown, but I also know that we've created a lot of task forces that basically bring back a recommendation that's kind of undecided. And I'm just concerned with staff time as well, if we're actually saying- actually saying, "Bring us back how you want to make this task force," or "Give us your recommendations on whether or not a task force would really be the, the path to choose to actually deal with all those studies," or whether or not it may be a council with input from a couple here or there, or if we just blaze forward and make something happen.
Well, I hope it's, if it wasn't clear, I'll just verbally make it clear, and I'd be glad to change the motion or allow you to change it, but I'm recommending, we're asking them to develop a recommendation for creation of a task force and an associated timeline to finally go through the data. I, I believe that instructs staff to give us a recommendation. This will be back to us with a list, sort of, how do we do it? What I'd like to do is have staff look at this, particularly our urban renewal folks, look at this and figure out what is, who best on it, how best to proceed, what is a realistic timeline, and move us through that. That's the concept. If I'm not clear enough, I, I hope, I hope that helps clarify it.
All right.
If I may? Yeah, and more so, it was a recommendation on creation of a task force. To me, wasn't perfectly clear on whether or not it's, bring me back a recommendation on, on if that's the way we should go, or if there's something else.
Let's hope they come back with a yes.
Okay. Other questions? Comments? All right, we're ready for the question. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you. All right, there is no other business to come before us, and the meeting is adjourned.